Okay, welcome. We have to the City Commission, a meeting of May, or excuse me, June 5th. It's June already. First on our agenda would be the roll call, please.
Mayor Haynes.
President.
Commissioner Locke.
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis.
Yes.
Commissioner Badway.
Here.
Commissioner Wilkinson.
Present.
Okay. Next thing would be invocation. We have Reverend Mark Summerbell? Thank you.
Joey Barhardsen for... Our gracious Father tonight, we come to you once again asking for wisdom and guidance at our City Commission meeting. We ask for your blessings upon our commissioners as they, and our mayor, as they deliberate over the issues that face Eldorado. We pray you'll continue to bless our city, continue to make it prosper. We pray in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. Okay, next we have on our agenda would be Pledge of Allegiance. I'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, no proclamations and no public appearances today, so we'll move into public comments. Anybody from the audience wish to address the commission? Seeing none, we'll move on to consent agenda. Consent agenda comprises your minutes. From previous meetings, was sent out to us earlier, everybody's had a chance to review the minutes from our May 15 meeting. Any questions or comments on the minutes? None, I'd entertain a motion.
I move the consent agenda as presented, be approved.
Second.
We move to second, any further discussion? In favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Without any old business, we'll move to new business. Item 10 on our agenda would, we have Community Improvement District designation for Holiday Inn Express. Do we have anybody who can speak to that matter? Scott or David?
Walter Skierdake. Can we go more about?
Thank you, Tabitha. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city and Wade Wilkinson with Central Kansas Properties have been working together on a community improvement district for a number of months now. The city is prior, has previously adopted a resolution noticing its intent to hold a public hearing regarding the creation of this community improvement district. That notice was published twice as required under state law. And today is actually the date of said public hearing, which should commence here momentarily, where the public will get a chance to make comment regarding the creation of this community improvement district. After the public hearing adjourns, the ordinance that this, that the governing body has before tonight creates the community improvement district, at the existing site of the Holiday Inn Express imposes a 2% retailer, retailer sales tax on all taxable sales occurring within the community improvement district. And also approves the execution of the development agreement between Central Kansas Properties and the city, which provides a bit more context on just how the, the sales tax and the sales tax fund is administered. So it might be prudent to hold the public hearing now and then maybe discuss a little bit the ordinance, which would, would be on the, the schedule following the adjournment of a public hearing.
We'd certainly want to do that before the ordinance.
Right.
Thank you for that information. I don't have a public hearing in my, in our agenda. Did we publish it? I don't have, it's not listed on here. It's part of the work.
Yes, it's published. I think it just, on the agenda, we didn't, it wasn't called a public hearing. But it's, it's fine. It's been published twice. And the ordinance was published with the agenda. So it shows that too.
When was it published? I mean, I just kind of want to...
It would've been published on May 6th and May 13th of this month, of this previous month.
And it was announced at your May 5th meeting as well.
Right. I recall that, but I didn't see it here, sorry. Proceeding with our public hearing, for sure. Okay? All right. So at this point, we would move, thank you for that. We'll move to public hearing and then, and then take further action. At this time, we'll open up, open up the floor for a public hearing for the creation of a community improvement district, designation for Holiday Inn. Anybody from the audience wish to speak on this matter? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and move on with the ordinance. Any further questions or thoughts from the commission? We've had a chance to talk about this a little bit at our last few meetings, so does the commission have any questions or comments at this time?
Wade, is this what you had in mind? I mean, this is everything you wanted, you were hoping it be?
Wade Wilkinson, 1100 South Denver. I believe so. We're just using it as a, as a tool for renovation.
Excellent. Okay, very good.
Any other questions? I would entertain a motion.
Ordinance number, please.
G-1249.
Did you want to say anything else?
No, I was just saying, I'm here to answer any additional questions if anybody has doubts with the ordinance or the development agreement.
Okay. I move to approve ordinance number G-1249, an ordinance authorizing the creation of the Holiday Inn Express Community Improvement District in the city of Eldorado, Kansas, authorizing reimbursement of certain economic development project costs incurred within said district, authorizing the imposition of a community improvement district sales tax to be collected within said district, and authorizing the execution of a development agreement relating to said district.
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Mayor Haynes?
Yes.
Commissioner Locke?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Commissioner Badway?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilkinson?
I will abstain.
Okay. Looks like the motion or the ordinance carries four to, four to zero with one abstention. Thank you. Next item on our agenda is public hearing for the extension of Country Club Road from McCollum to 29th Street, to East 29th Street, project number 513.
Yes, Mayor, Commissioner. You set this evening as a public hearing date for the project, for those improvements on Country Club Road. After you hold and open a public hearing, you will consider a resolution on the advisability of making such improvements to Country Club Road.
All right, any questions from the commission before we move forward?
Just one.
Yes.
That that is outside of the city limits, the city will carry. But if so, the assessment will be passed on?
If annexed within the city, or platted, or entrance is requested, then we will recruit those funds.
Okay.
In a manner that's appropriate at that time, with the intent to reach 100% of that.
Okay. I just want to make sure I understood that, that part.
Scott, in projects past, we've had a list of how much was going to be assessed to each property. Do you, do we have that? I, I have that in front of me. You don't have that in your packet, but I'd be happy to read those numbers off if that would... Well, it was, so of the, the cost assessed to the improvement district of the 380, almost $383,000, how much of that is the script districts? Okay, so the total project 1.2, it's roughly half, city at large improvement district. So improvement district in my cost estimate, we are estimating $663,000 roughly is the improvement district. USD 490's proposed assessment would be $119,795.60. And I can keep going if you all wish, there's only seven properties within this improvement district.
I'd like to hear it.
Okay. JB Investments, which is the trailer park, they have two parcels of land within the improvement district. Their first proposed assessment would be $180,219.30. Their second parcel is $8,086.96. The city of Eldorado, the parkland at the corner of McCollum and Country Club, has a proposed assessment of $26,491.39. Banks of Eldorado at the corner of McCollum and Country Club has a proposed assessment of $48,210.72. And then owner currently Banks of Eldorado, but within the county, not the city limits, this is a portion we are carrying, is $268,855.11. And Mr. Ted Farmer owns a parcel within the improvement district, which is in the county. His estimated assessment was $11,452.58. And those are estimated, in past practices, that is top end. There's contingencies built into these estimates. We typically don't, I can only think of two times in 15 years that we've, at the end of the project, been over the estimate assessments and had to do something about it. But typically, procedurally, we've always told those prop owners within the improvement district, that is their highest cost they will pay.
I think, I...
Is this going to include a sidewalk, one from McCollum Road up to the new school too?
Correct.
Okay. I think at this time, I would, yes, I declare this a conflict of interest to me, the benefit of this is the school district, and that's a client of mine, ours, so moving forward with the public hearing and enacting that, and I've not participated in the discussion here, so Chase, I will turn over you as vice mayor, and I will, I will exit and let this proceeding go with that. Do you have everything you need to move forward with the public hearing?
I think so.
Okay. I'll do that. And I'll let this decide on the one without, without my presence.
Scott, I'm sorry, I get right fast enough. What was the $663,000 number? That is the improvement district's cost. Okay. City at large, so the portion that the city's stepping in and paying for extra pavement with, storm sewer intersections is $628,437.5. That's the extra stuff.
Right.
You guys have any more questions before we open the public hearing? You good, Nick?
Yeah.
All right, at this time, we'll open the public hearing for project number 513. Anyone wishing to address the commission is welcome to come up. All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. See if anyone have any additional questions to follow. This time, I'll entertain the motion.
Want to give me a resolution number?
2833.
2833?
43.
43. I move the resolution number 2843, a resolution determining the advisability of the making of certain internal improvements for the city of Eldorado, Kansas, making certain findings with respect thereto, and authorize and providing for the making of the improvements in accordance for such findings subject to protest. Street improvements, Country Club Road, project 513.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries four oh.
Thank you, Chase. Move on to item 12. On our agenda would be proposed court cases. Any staff wish to speak to this before?
Chief Zeman's coming up.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Commission. Kurt Zeman, Eldorado Police Department. Coming before you tonight to talk to you again about the possibility of raising the court costs for the Eldorado Municipal Court. I know we talked about it in a previous meeting. I don't know how much of this you want me to go over again, but the, the costs associated with operating a municipal court continue to rise. When you look at all the stuff the municipal court does, and you've got records clerked constantly, tasks of work, you've got the judge's salary, you've got the city attorney's salary. Somebody gets a court-appointed attorney, we pay that fee, 200 bucks of wax, so, I mean, this continues to rise. I, I did a survey of surrounding communities like I did a couple of years ago and found that we were one of the lowest, again, in the area. The average in our area is about $91.72 court cost. I'm recommending we raise ours from the 73, it currently is to even $90. Judge Candy Baker and city attorney Ashland are on board with this, think it needs to be done, just to keep, keep up with the times and, like I said, these other communities. When I did this survey, I think I brought this before you in 2014, the ones that were already higher than us, when I called them, they're like, yeah, we're this now, but we're getting ready to raise it to 80 or 90 or 100 back in 14. And, and like I said, it, I think, I think you've got this, just example, handovers currently at 90, Park City 93, a guess of 70, Butler County 9350, Douglas $96, we're at 73, Goddard's 11050, Newton 80, Park City 99, and Winfield 9350. Like I said, the average cost of the ones listed excluding us is 9172. Like I said, that would be a $17 raise from what it is now. Mayor, I think you asked me a question at the work session, and I probably didn't answer really well. You'd asked, you were, you were talking about the write-offs we have every year. The reality is, when, when you're talking about court costs, when you're talking about criminal land traffic, the vast majority of those charges are traffic violations. You know, criminal, we have a lot of it, but that's a smaller part of what we do than the traffic. In reality, most traffic tickets are paid. There's a small, small part that's not. If, if those don't get paid, we issue warrants and turn them to collection, and we never quit trying to collect those, those debts. Even, even the write-offs you talked about, we never stop trying to collect those. I mean, a lot of those people that, those were written off, have warrants on them, but we can't find them, they're in other states or whatever, so, anyway.
Okay, thank you.
That's our proposal, I think. I think Tabitha's drafted a proposal ordinance to cover that if you so desire. If you guys have any more questions, I'd be having to answer or defer to Ashland.
Question I have is, so are we currently operating in the red with our court costs?
Depends on how you look at it. When you're talking about enforcing the law, it, it covers the court's budget, that company, we're close to the police department, the work we do. I think the, I think the revenue for our courts normally 350,000 range for the year, sometimes higher, sometimes a little lower. I'm trying to think what that budget is right off the top of my head, 160, 180,000. So, I mean, it, it pays for the court, but then put it down in the police department's budget, and I know that's a separate deal, but, I mean...
That's kind of where I'm getting at it.
To enforce the law and stuff in this, and I mean, your, your police department budget's $2.3 million a year.
This would be less money had to come out of the general fund, correct?
Yes, exactly.
Mayor Commission, I would also point out two things. The first is, is the, the traffic tickets that, you know, make up a lot of where those citations come from. If the failure to pay on those, the court has the ability to suspend the license of the person who's failed to pay or appear on those traffic infractions, which gives the people whose license is suspended sort of more of a motive to come back and make, they, they cannot get their license reinstated until they make the payments to the city. So part, part of the practice is if it's a traffic infraction and they fail to make payments on their fines, including court costs, then they have to make those payments or get caught up. So even the people who aren't paying, there's a mechanism in the law that allows us some control in some measure there. The second thing that I would mention, and you might've mentioned this in the work session, but a lot of the court costs, we don't, some of the court costs, I would say, we don't keep. We have to pay the KBI, we have to pay the state, we have to pay a lot of other fees that go into, so our court costs, the current existence of our court costs, we don't keep all of those funds. Those funds get sent off here, there, and everywhere. And I guess I have a third thing. Sometimes is we use the court costs as a mechanism, if we know someone is insolvent and fines, i- if we tried and we tried and we tried, you know, we can use those court costs as, okay, take care of your business and do everything right, we are going to at least pay costs for having the officer and for the court staff to pay for the time for you to be here. So raising those costs enough to make the time that you're having a prosecutor, a judge, a clerk, and all those things, spend their time on, on those things, I think is, makes sense to me.
So as we see this breakdown here of the $91 proposed, $2350 is a state statute. $550 is, goes to some of our local advocacy vulnerable populations? Yes. We fund some of, some of the CASA, some of those programs out of that. $61 is to the municipal court, $10 for continuance, and $10 for driver's license suspension. So those, those other, those last two $10 ones are only if they're not paying, or if they, or if they want to pay extra to have a...
So basically, for, out of the $73 court cost it is now, city keeps $44 of that $73, the rest of it, with this new proposal, the city will keep $61 of the total $90 court cost.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from the commission?
Tabitha, ordinance number?
1250.
Thanks, Chief.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number 1250, an ordinance amending the title to of the Eldorado Municipal Court related to the municipal court.
Second.
Okay. Okay, so we moved to second. Any further comments or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
It's a roll call.
It's a roll call. I have the, we anticipated ordinance today.
It should be on the...
Yeah.
With honor?
It's not in mine.
One more page. That page.
There it is. I'm sorry, I've got a page ahead of myself. Okay, roll call, sorry.
Commissioner Locke?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Commissioner Badway?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilkinson?
Yes.
Mayor Haynes?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Last thing on our agenda would be advisory board appointments. Do we have additional appointments today?
The only appointment we have this evening is Dan Bullock to the Planning Commission. He filled out a renewal application after the first meeting regarding advisory boards was held.
Okay.
And so we received that, and you reviewed it at the last work session. So he is ready to be appointed. We still have openings on the CBB, we have one opening on the CBB committee, we have one opening on Parks and Recreation, and one opening on Planning Commission.
What was the last one?
The Planning Commission.
Okay. We have had this discussion without Mr. Bullock, and he is, represents an out-of-city...
Yes, he fills that spot, so the next person can be from in town.
All right, any questions or comments? Entertaining motion.
I move to appoint Dan Bullock to the Planning Commission for a term expiring on May 1st, 2020.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved to second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Danny Bullock to be on the Planning Commission. All right, moving on to our agenda, we have reports. Anything from the commission or advisory boards to report?
I have some. Parks and Rec Advisory Board met on May 17th. We talked about naming the Disc Golf Course, and it was decided to name it the Eldorado Disc Golf Course at Legion Park. Talked a little bit about the Parks and Rec Master Plan. Talked about spring sports, soccer's over, and summer sports, baseball and softball have begun. Swimming lessons are also starting. City has partnered with the Y to do that. And our next meeting is in June. Airport Advisory meets this coming Thursday. Had to put it off a week because we didn't have a, a quorum, so it'll be Thursday. Had a CBB meeting on the 25th. And if you're out and about and you see this little thing sitting on the table where you happen to be, pick it up, take it home, because on the back are all the activities that are scheduled through the CBB and in Eldorado through the end of the year. So, and these are not just CBB activities, they're city activities also. So steal one. We have a new visitor's guide that should be ready and available, that says, tells us what's happening in Eldorado, Eldorado-based. We have one for Butler County, but this one is just in Eldorado. On the back, of course, is the advertisement for the Damn Music Festival, which comes up July 28th and 29th. We also, this coming Saturday, have Ballet in the Park. It's in Forest Park, it starts at 7 o'clock, and it's going to be the Wizard of Oz, put on by the Wichita... at seven o'clock, and it's going to be the Wizard of Oz, put on by the Wichita Children's Theater. Wichita Theater, somebody in Wichita's putting this on.
Wichita Ballet.
Is it Wichita Ballet? Okay, thank you. That's this, this, June ninth, coming up. July seventeenth is the Drums Across Kansas, July twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth is the Shrine Bowl, and actually, they will be here most of that full week, ahead of that. Oktoberfest is the twenty-second of September, Lantern Fest is the twenty-third of September, and that's in the evening, or, in the evening, and September twenty-third in the morning is the Wong of River Festival. So, those are some of those activities. So, again, pick up your Eldorado and steal your little pork thing.
The Ballet in the Park is June ninth, that's Friday.
Friday, June ninth, seven o'clock.
Yes.
Forest Park.
Yes.
That's it.
Where are the fireworks going to be shot off? That was a question that was asked to me.
Ah, that's a Commission decision, didn't we decide on the stadium?
Yes.
On the stadium?
Okay.
I wasn't here.
Oh, okay, yeah, we decide on the stadium.
Okay, thank you. Nick?
A week ago last Friday, City of Eldorado suffered a great loss when Raymond Chris died in a tragic accident, and there'll never be another one like him. He was one of the biggest supporters of this town, that this town's ever seen. He supported everything, he supported the junior college, the hospital, the school district, sports, everything. He was one of the major developers in town, and he was my friend, and I'm going to miss him, but I just, and the whole town's going to miss him, because there'll never be anyone that did the things that Raymond did for the City of Eldorado. That's all.
Yeah, it is a loss. Thanks, Nick.
Our board didn't meet last Thursday, and it's not going to meet till next month, so I don't have anything to say.
We met with the Library Board, they've got summer reading programs, instead of exhaustive report from me, I'd suggest visiting the library, or going, getting online, it's all listed out there. A lot of summer activities scheduled for that, and we have, I have a REAP meeting coming up on the Executive Committee there, so that's coming up this week, so I'll be doing that. And that's all I have as far as reports, so move to City Manager's Report.
Just a few things, as Commissioner Wilkinson mentioned, the Shrine Bowl's coming up. Staff met with representatives from USD four ninety, as well as Butler Community College, and some other representatives to conduct our final overview of the meeting, I'm sorry, of the event, there's going to be a parade, a five K, several clinics, obviously logistics, moving kids back and forth between different facilities, football game itself, and a couple of other ancillary things. The city will be providing security during the football game, our Eldorado Police Department will be helping with that, and then we'll be partnering with other agencies, provide security to other events for that, so that'll be coming up. But we had our final preparatory meeting, and so hopefully, from here on, if we need to, we'll get together, but pretty much have all the details ironed out on the Shrine Bowl coming up in July. Also, the Parks Master Plan Task Force will be meeting on Wednesday at six P.M. to go over kind of next steps and strategies moving forward. We are going to have a representative from an aquatics consulting firm attend the meeting to talk about aquatic centers, and kind of get an idea from the task force of what they'd like to see in terms of different amenities featured in an aquatic center, so that we can start putting together some cost estimates and try to figure out how much that project might cost. And then, one thing that was scrapped from the agenda was the annual audit presentation that was scheduled for this afternoon, it's been rescheduled to July fifth, staff is finalizing, well, we're actually reviewing the piece that the auditors provided us, as well as preparing the transmit a letter and a couple other pieces, and so we'll be set to go for July fifth on that. And then finally, the last thing I have, we have a couple of conflicts with July meetings, and so I wanted to get the Commission to kind of talk about that very briefly. The meeting for July third, staff is recommending to move that to July fifth, the day after July fourth, so you can do that if you want, or not, and then in addition, July seventeenth is a conflict with the Drums Across Kansas, yes, Drums Across Kansas, so we would recommend moving that to the eighteenth, that way, in case that meeting is long, we can get everybody to that event, so, and I believe that requires a Commission action to reschedule this meeting.
I'll be gone the week of the fourth, that entire week, just, if anyone else is, for what it's worth. I should be back by the fifth, so we can move it to the fifth. Does that work for everybody, the fifth?
Sure.
And the eighteenth, does that work for everybody?
Yeah.
Do we need to vote for that?
Probably wouldn't hurt.
I think I just need to publish it.
Okay, we'll publish it, and I think we're, we should go.
All right.
That's all I had at this time.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Next item on our agenda would be executive session for the privilege of attorney-client discussions. How much time do we need for that? Fifteen? I'm going to add five minutes to that.
Okay.
So, we will.
Seven thirty?
Seven thirty, we'll move to executive session for.
I move to reassess and to executive session for the purpose of discussing legal matters and to reconvene.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Badway, the State of Kansas has changed some open records laws, and our motion has changed, can you read the exact motion now?
There was one. I move to adjourn to an executive session pursuant to the attorney-client privileges exception under KSA seven-five dash four-three-one-nine B two, to discuss pending legal matters and to reconvene the regularly scheduled meeting at seven-thirty P.M. in the City Commission Room.
Second.
Jesus. It's been moved to the second, all in favor, say aye. And we'll adjourn to executive session until seven-thirty.